Yeah, let's pick up.
Can you hear me?
The microphone doesn't seem to work.
Mine don't think it can.
Test again.
Test, how is that?
You can, uh...
Can I move closer? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let it be noted for 6:01 PM. Mrs. Mrs. DeCarlo, can I please have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks here. Mrs. DeBaru here. Mrs. Nezette here. Mrs. Shields here. Mrs. Smith here. Mrs. Thomasini.
Here.
Here. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act was passed to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Rockaway Township Board of Education has cause notice of the date, time, and place of said meetings to be published in the Daily Record, the Star Ledger, and posted in all schools in the district, in the municipal building of the township and the township library. Does any board member wish to object to the conduct of this meeting for the purpose stated in the public notice? Can I please have a motion to wave the flag?
So moved.
Second. Can I show a hand? Thank you. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
Show of hand. Let it be noted at 6:03 PM. No, but is that thing working?
Yeah, no, that's second.
Is that gonna turn around here?
Yeah, so this is the one we can hear. I'm not promising something.
So they still know?
Yeah.
They're coming in tonight?
They're coming tonight. Can you take a break?
But it's like...
No, that was because that was there.
So far, very good.
That was there. And now she's on a...
A little readable.
Moved out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So I can start talking again.
I know. She's not just chatting or anything. She's just thinking closely. Yeah, like, she said, yeah. I was like, no. She's like, yeah. She's, yes. She's just turning back to the side.
Now I got people... I don't want to... Yeah. I would definitely say two to ten.
Okay. Good.
Two to two.
Do it all at once.
Try again. Um... You suck me now, getting your eighth graders all... Ninth graders all. Stay locked and need to look for them, right? Yes, stay locked. That was your other part. That was my number. Yes. Or a thumbprint. Can I do a thumbprint? No. I can't do the D bars. Now, but they... I really care to look at her report. Did you get it? I'm gonna ask him. He was in here. So... That's worse. We're doing this, though, right? All punch clubs. Jeffrey goes, there was Morse code pride. She goes, I clicked on it thinking it was like... My mom did. I don't think I... She doesn't have... Go back and see.
Yeah.
She goes, and there's things... Rainbow flag. Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
But then she's choosing all these like...
Yes. I haven't seen.
So you're doing this... Right there.
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
All lies.
Fifteen? We got you.
Okay.
So you fifteen? I think so. I know. I'm sorry. Crazy. No, no, no. I'm just... I don't know why I understand. Just watch the schedule. What do you guess?
Yes, live.
I can't hear you.
Everyone knows we're live. My mic is not working now. Oh. I'm just trying to get the...
What are you doing?
Yes. Ooh.
I think we have until seven thirty. Yeah. I think it'll be... A lot of... She's somewhat productive today. Why is she not?
Thank you. Let it be noted at 7:30. Can everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operations of Rockaway Township's public schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operations of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees to the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by the members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public?
So move.
Show of hands. Let it be noted, there are no members of the public present. Okay, we will open up again at the end in case we have someone come in. Can I please have a motion to close to the public?
So move.
So good.
Show of hands, please. Thank you. First on the agenda is communications. We have two communications, three communications. I checked at 1 o'clock this afternoon and I have no other further communications. Mrs. DeCarlo, do we have any other communications?
No, there's nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the August 26th meeting. Can I please have a motion to approve the minute? September, no. Is it listed correctly? Oh, my agenda says the August 26th. I didn't catch that. Okay, it's September 23rd. It must have been the other one. Any discussion on the minutes? Other than I have the right date? If no, please, can I have a roll call, Mrs. DeCarlo?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudelaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Open passes?
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Rockaway Township. I'm pleased to share with the community that we are on track to post back-to-school night virtual presentations next week. The elementary schools will post on Tuesday, October 13th, and Copland's will post on Thursday, October 15th. Please be on the lookout for reminders from the principals. Also, as a reminder, we made some calendar changes to green and gold days in November to keep them as equal as possible. During the week of November 2nd, there will be two school days. Monday, November 2nd will be a full green day and Wednesday, November 4th, will be a full gold day. As for Thanksgiving week, Monday will be a normal OID and Tuesday will be a normal green day. However, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving will be a gold day schedule. For middle school students who aren't in a full virtual model, please strongly consider attending our middle school block party outside here at Copland on Monday afternoon. All of the details can be found in Principal Ganella's email blast. We are super excited to create this opportunity for these students to safely reconnect with our middle school community in person. As of earlier today, we had over 60 people registered to attend the event. The Copland Student Leadership Team, currently 10 students, played an integral role in putting this event together by meeting with our restorative team to plan the day. Events will include mindfulness exercises through our partnership with Rutgers, Just Dance activities, a positive mural activity, and obstacle course, positive chalk art, and food will be provided for all participants. All safety protocols will be in place with the fun activities planned for all. Principal Ganella and the student leadership and restorative teams do intend to plan a similar event for our in-person students later this month. I do want to share with the community and acknowledge that I have received numerous requests for our district to accelerate our reopening plan and to bring more and more students back for a four-day-a-week schedule or to move sooner to a full five-day-a-week schedule in person. The current conditions of the pandemic and the social distancing guidelines in place prevent me from accelerating our reopening plans at this time. I will continue to provide monthly updates related to changes to our reopening plans. However, at this time, no significant changes are being considered. On behalf of our entire administration, we remain deeply grateful for the community's partnership, which has allowed us to reopen our schools with our hybrid model during this pandemic. We pledge to continue to work in partnership with the community to ensure we are all doing all we can each day to keep our students and staff safe. We are better together and together we will get through this pandemic time. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you. Any board members have any comments or questions?
I just comment just about the virtual back-to-school night. I know the high school did it that way and it worked out really well. We watched it with our ninth grader, so she got to see what the teachers were saying too about their classes, so.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for sharing. I know the planning has been underway, principal messages, and the teachers working on the grade level on it. We think they're going to be very informative. At the end of the day, in the pre-pandemic world, really, a back-to-school night was meant to be that, to kick off the information with a lot of information. So with this virtual experience, it'll also be memorialized on the website.
Next on the agenda is the curriculum report.
Good evening, members of the board, and hello, Rockaway Township. In case you haven't noticed, it's election season. To help our fifth-grade students understand the election process, we've created a game within the district called Destination Election. Through the gaming platform Aludo, we've created a self-paced game for students that allows them to read articles, watch videos, and demonstrate their learning through writing, screen captures, and videos. As they prove they understand the content, they earn points and badges and level up through in-game missions. Each day when they log in, they'll see the current leaderboard, which is broken up by school and by individual students. This game was created internally, and our students are the only players in this game. We are excited to expand our use of this gaming platform within other aspects of our curriculum. Our social studies department at Copland is set to begin working on a series of curriculum addendums to address the inclusion of resources from the Amistad curriculum. The Amistad Bill A1301 calls on New Jersey schools to incorporate African-American history into their social studies curriculum. Recently, the Amistad curriculum was developed for schools to help with this process. The resources available are rich and varied and present many opportunities for our students to engage in dialogue and discovery around historical topics. On Tuesday of this week, the district's RTI teams from each building got together for our annual kickoff meeting. Last year, this group worked incredibly well together, sharing resources, best practices, and ideas. This year, in the face of the events of last spring and the unprecedented start to this school year, this group is faced with a very difficult endeavor to assess our students and determine where students stand in relation to the typical expectations of each grade level. Using our universal screening assessment data and teacher referrals, this group will analyze student performance and work with teachers, administrators, and parents to chart paths for students to remediate learning deficits and weaknesses throughout the school year. Each building has a talented group of interventionists and reading specialists, and we are excited to see the growth their students will show. We learned a great deal last year about the processes and feel we have refined the RTI model in the district. Much credit to that change has to be given to the teams at each building. On Monday, October 12th, the district will be engaging in a full day of professional learning that includes articulation time for departments and grade levels, ready math training, restorative practice training, robotics training, curriculum and standards review, and contact tracing training for our school nurses. We are looking forward to a day to connect our teachers together in collaboration with one another, and we find that our best work often emanates from days like this. Thank you and have a great evening.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
So, I don't know if you can hear me. So I'm a super fan of the RTI process. I think it's amazing. The teams that you have are just phenomenal. The one question that I have is that, you know, last year, certain students were classified as needing additional support and having RTIs. And so now here we are, five weeks into the school year, and so I'm wondering if, you know, waiting for assessments, of course, I'm wondering if that's always kind of what's going to happen, is there's going to be that gap for students who potentially still need that support to have these assessments done to define whether or not they'll continue to get support? Or is that just because of COVID? Or are we looking to kind of find ways to kind of cover that gap in time? I just wanted to know a little bit more about that.
So it's a great question. And so one of the downfalls of obviously what happened last spring, among the many downfalls, was the fact that we did not get our June assessments in. We had a window of assessments that we were planning on giving in June, which did a couple different things to us. It would have given us a great way to look at the progress and growth throughout the school year by using these interventions, but it also would have set us up for September. We would have been able to use that June data to determine how quickly we could start services in September. So without that June data, we were relying on data from January that we knew not to be... The data from January was accurate, but with all the things that occurred between January and September, we really felt that getting this assessment data in in September would enable us to really get a clear picture. So I do agree, in the scenario we had drawn up and the plan we had prior to the pandemic, we would have started much, much earlier in September with this year. So I do regret we weren't able to do that. And going forward, that will be the plan, is to use that June data to make determinations for September start.
That's very helpful to know. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? I just know I'm really excited about this Aludo game. I think that's a great way to motivate kids, and I'm looking forward to hearing how that works and once it takes root.
Yeah, once we get it a little bit more built out, I'll be able to show it here probably our next meeting.
Awesome. Cool. Thank you. Now we have committee reports.
Operation Committee is meeting on the 22nd at 4:00 p.m. at Central Office. And then the Policy Committee met on September 30th. I think I have a long date on here. I need to double-check.
Yes, we recently met on September 30th. It was from 6:15 to 7:45 at Central Office. In attendance was Dr. T., Kristi Cuver-Larruege, virtually, Aaron Thomasini, and myself. We addressed and reviewed Policy 1649. That's the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which is identified as mandated. It's also new. This is out of a recent policy alert from June. We've identified it as needed due to the current pandemic. We have received input regarding paid versus unpaid leave from Mrs. DeCarlo. We noticed it reads more like a law versus policy, so we had decided to put it on hold and we were looking for additional information from Strauss Esme. And we are also aware that the information had been getting disseminated through Mrs. West and her newsletters to the staff. So we did get confirmation from our vendor that although it's identified as mandated, we may not have to adopt this policy as long as we're following it. So we've been following it, but I'm wondering if our board attorney can also weigh in on your recommendation.
Yeah, so as with any statute, which the FFCRA, which is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, is a statute on the books. So as long as the board is following the law and continues to follow the law, whether or not a policy is adopted is essentially irrelevant. Our recommendation would be that best practice in notifying employees as to their rights is to ensure that a policy is on the books that sets forth essentially employee information, applicable information to the employees. And that, the policy manual essentially is that. It's the employee interpretation, or the policy manual serves as the employee's resource to the practices of the district and the applicability of certain statutes. And particularly with regard to the FFCRA, would be our recommendation that an FFCRA policy, which essentially bridges the gap between the actual text of the statute and the district's practices, be on the books.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also discussed bylaw 0155.1, which includes board member participation at board meetings. We did discuss the feedback received from the full board, and I'll share more of that at the end of this report. It really pertained to, as we're looking at it, electronic participation. It is recommended by Strauss Esme, New Jersey School Boards, due to the pandemic. We also had requested additional information from New Jersey School Boards, and I'll share again that information as well at the end of the report. In addition, we reviewed Policy 1648, Policy 1468.02, Policy 1648.03. These are all a part of the Restart Recovery Plan mandated. They're all new in relation to the coronavirus pandemic. They also come at Policy Alert 221, which we actually just received on Friday, and it directly aligns with the plan document that Dr. T. had already created and communicated to the community back in August. We also were requesting additional information from Strauss Esme, just because it reads more like a guidance versus a policy. And it was the information we received from Strauss Esme is that it's required by law on the governor's reopening plan, and we absolutely must adopt these policies. So we're just looking for that confirmation, just based on how the language was worded. Policy 5200, attendance, is another one that we also reviewed. It's mandated. It has a regulation. It is from a recent policy alert from June. We wanted to take a look at it in addition to the policy alert because we wanted to allow for the OID and virtual learning. We noticed that our alert version has a lot of differences from the version that we currently have on the website, so we also had Dr. T. reach out to Strauss Esme regarding that. Policy 3322 and Policy 4322, both dealing with staff members' use of cellular telephones, which is also mandated. This was recommended by Dr. T. as part of the RTEA, requesting clarification for the staff in response to the screener, the new district app, et cetera. So we were looking to insert language to allow for the use of the device to facilitate professional responsibilities. As far as informational items that we discussed, the Restart Recovery Plan is assisting us in the completion of the Policy 1648. In addition, the Policy Organization Chart, which is our mode of appraisal, which is the new document, continues to be updated, and I plan to share another snapshot or copy of this Google Doc with the full board in the near future, just so you can see the progress. So as far as our recommendations, in the near future, Policy and Regulation 5200, attendance will be up for first read. We are anticipating on October 28th, based on the response we received from Strauss Esme. And then as far as the 1648 and those appendices that went along with it, we're also anticipating that we will have that ready for a first read at the next board meeting. In addition to the two cellphone policies, P. 3322 and 4322, which are up for, will be up for a first read once the revisions have been made. We needed to change our meeting because we have a standing meeting the fourth Wednesday of each month, but we have a board meeting at that time, so I just wanted to confirm with the policy committee, does Thursday, October 15th work for you? Yes, okay. It works for me. It just won't be the full two hours. I can commit from 6:15 to about 7:45, so it just won't be full two hours. And then I have a question for the board. I'm wondering if there are any board members that have a concern with policies on the agenda going out in a cleaner version, along possibly with the current version in the online policy manual versus a version that might be 18 pages with multiple strike-throughs? And we would only look to do this in the case of policies that have extensive strike-throughs, such as the attendance policy and our substance abuse regulation. Is there anyone that has a concern?
So we wouldn't be receiving the original policy? We would be getting your recommended policy?
And the recommended policy.
We'd be getting them side by side?
You'd be getting the one that was and the new one, you know, and any relevant information, I guess, we would give as well, but you wouldn't be seeing the whole document with all these lines, so it's a point where you have this huge policy to review if you want it cleaned.
However, we have the version with the strike-throughs available that can also be shared, but we just thought that it would be in a couple of instances that it may be more confusing than helpful. but we just thought that it would be in a couple of instances that it may be more confusing than helpful.
Maybe just note that.
Okay.
Maybe attach all three, yeah?
Okay. Okay. I mean, I'm fine with that. I just didn't want to, you know, have too much going on there.
The bold are important because it makes it extremely transparent exactly what changed and why. I can understand if it's 20 pages and you're consolidating a 20-page policy to maybe do.
Yes, well, that was reasonable.
That's what the issue is.
That's all. Thirteen to three.
But we'll gladly send it out more in size than just say that.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate the feedback. And then I wanted to also share some of the information that we received on that bylaw, um, that was allowing for electronic participation at board meetings. Um, some of the feedback that we received from board members was, you know, only putting this into effect in the case of an emergency, um, or an emergent situation that is beyond the board members' control. The feedback was that most had mentioned that they were not in favor of just adding this for the purpose of business travel or vacation. We also noted that the process that's given in the policy that was provided to us seems to be a little bit cumbersome. For example, you have to notify the board at a prior meeting. However, what if there's an emergency, um, due to COVID? So we were looking at how we could reflect that language, uh, you know, by saying if reasonable to provide that way advanced notice. Um, we did confirm with Dr. T that we would be able to have, for example, one board member if necessary, um, call into the meeting and we would already have the technology set up to do that. We would obviously want to put some procedures into place, um, to assist with that.
And some of the. The confidentiality needs to be addressed in that as well.
Correct. So we sought, um, some advice from Strauss Esme. Um, because we wanted to bring that up because obviously the executive session piece was something that we wanted to, you know, know a little bit more about as well. So the feedback we got from Strauss Esme was that most boards allow it in cases where members are traveling or cannot attend to other things, even though we were looking to be, you know, more specific than that and weren't looking for that same rationale. Their response was also that they usually limit it so that a member is not approved to do it all the time. In the case of COVID, you may want to approve it for a particularly concerned member for a period of months then reevaluate. Um, you know, we did let them know that we aren't having any attendance concerns as of now. However, we don't want to have a situation where there is an emergency or, or this circumstance does occur and, you know, we don't have this provision in place. Um, it was also mentioned that it's generally not advisable for closed session, but the Department of Education allows it during the pandemic. So they gave us some suggestive language and by now I will share that information with all of you and we're going to be discussing this at the next policy meeting as well. Um, and the question did come up, um, regarding executive session and voting and of course, only if the member participates in the executive session can he or she vote on those issues discussed in the executive session. Please reach out, um, with any additional feedback and we'll add it on, uh, to this. Yes?
I have one thought. Instead of it being referred to specifically COVID, maybe something where somebody has to quarantine um, to, and to protect the health of the, the rest of the board. Maybe that kind of language because it, I, I like this idea of, you know, for a rare occurrence and things that we might not anticipate, but I, I also don't want it to be, um, overused. But I think the idea that maybe not using the word COVID, but maybe something specific to having to quarantine.
All right. I'm adding it in right now. Thank you. And again, any other information or do you think of something later and you want to send it along, please send it along. And are there any other questions?
Do you foresee, uh, the Policy 1649 coming up? That's the COVID one coming up for first read next board meeting as well, or?
Yes, we wanted feedback first from, uh, the board attorney. So that is on, that's on the agenda for next time, but as of right now, we just wanted to confirm um, and just make sure, you know, we had all the information that we needed to make that decision.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I have from the education committee is that we're meeting on the 14th at Central Office at 4:00 PM. And Mrs. DeCarlo, on our, on our agenda, it doesn't have a business administrator's report and I didn't see anything from you today, so I was assuming that there was something. Okay. Just wanted to check. All right. Thank you. Okay. Onto the next part of our agenda, Recommended for Board Action is Personnel. We have 32 items that go all the way through to page seven. Can I please have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation of personnel items?
So moved. Second.
Items of personnel, there's no discussion. So that I, so can I please have a roll call, Mrs. DeCarlo, on items of personnel? Page seven.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvore?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to approve the HIV resolution?
So moved.
Mrs. DeCarlo, can I have a roll call on the vote for HIV to affirm the superintendent's recommendation of a non-confirmed HIV?
Yes. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvore?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And can I just confirm, um, that we have no further HIBs?
Yes, that's confirmed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are education items. Can I please have a motion to approve the education recommendations?
So moved. Second.
There are two items. Any board discussion on these two items? Okay, since there's no public, I am going to ask for a roll call, please, on education items.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Special Education. We have five items. It goes to page nine. Can I please have a motion to approve Special Education recommendations?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any board discussion? If, um, if no discussion, can I please have a roll call on Special Education items?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Administration Items. We have four items on page 10. Can I please have a motion to approve the administration recommendations?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any board discussion? Okay. And there, since there's no public, I'm not going to open to the public. Um, can I please have a roll call to vote, uh, for a vote on the administrative amendments?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Finance. Can I have a motion to approve the Finance recommendations?
So moved. Second.
There are two items. Any board discussion regarding? Okay, if not, um, can I please have a roll call on Finance items?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudilaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no items of policy. So we will move to Old and New Business. Any board member have any old or new business to discuss?
I just wanted to, oh, sorry. I just wanted to highlight, uh, two things. Number one, uh, I wanted to commend the district. The other day I was able to observe, uh, a little bit, um, of the classroom time that they were having virtually and the kids were having a blast in a couple of classes. Uh, so I just wanted to again, uh, say what a great job and working in this current pandemic with everything going on and still making class fun to them too. So that's awesome. The other thing is I wanted to thank Dr. Sornanian for taking a couple of minutes with me the other day just to, uh, be able to have a little dialogue discussion. I truly appreciate it on our Class Three officers and, uh, I look forward to future discussions and thank you for that.
Thank you. Enjoyed the meeting and looking forward to the following meeting we're going to have and continuing the conversation. And thank you for acknowledging, you know, the experience you've had there with, with your children and, and, and one of the many examples of our, of, of the outstanding work our teachers are doing. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, I had a community member reach out to me looking for some contact information and I immediately said, oh, no, it happened. Um, he immediately then proceeded to explain to me that the bus driver routed to Copeland. His daughter had left her lunchbox and she got to Copeland and she was panicked. She was all upset about it. Little did she know, the bus driver got back to the bus garage, got in her personal car and drove her lunchbox here. So he was just, just so grateful. And again, it goes to all the staff in the district. Bus drivers, custodians, teachers, paraprofessionals, secretaries, principals. Everyone really is just doing a phenomenal job and putting the kids first. So I just wanted, I know he sent, was sending a communication, hence the I've traveled with email, but, um, I just wanted it out there because I think at the end of the day, these people are going above and beyond and they should be recognized. I'd also like to highlight, I noticed the bike rack at Copeland. So that was super exciting. My kid can't ride a bike here, but if he could, there'd be a bike rack. So also, once again, I appreciate the administration for listening to the community and the kids and making that happen so quickly.
Thank you, uh, for sharing and I can verify and confirm the email was received and, and the feedback they get back from the bus driver. That was a really nice email again.
Anyone? I, I think you were first.
I had, and I have about old business. Last year we talked about the TRIPS program a bunch of times and I just want to shout out to Michael Pierce, my pen guy. He's still, he's still out there making pens and making a business out of this. And for October, he made breast cancer awareness pens.
I love it.
And is donating some of the proceeds. So that program really, you know, jumpstarted, I think, him doing this, so.
Excellent. Great news.
And I just want to say I appreciate the attention to the switch of the green and the gold days, um, you know, to kind of make up for some of that time. Um, I also recently attended that Morris County meeting, um, New Jersey School Boards Association. So I was able to share some of your feedback with them. Um, Dr. T, we received updates from Charlene regarding, um, issues with candidate's briefing program, new board member certification. Um, we also received information from some of the members there, superintendents, um, look for us for observations, um, discussing some of that information, what can and can't be done. Um, and then things that were done to keep board members on board. They shared some, um, you know, positive experiences.
I just wanted to say that last night I attended the Middlesex County School Board Association. Um, just wanted to highlight that Bruce Young, uh, he's a board member from Carl Sat, E. Sretherberg. Um, he's the VP for County Activities for New Jersey School Board Association. He brought up, uh, there was a book given to him by, um, Dr. Fong San called The Governance Code. And he highly recommended that any board member should be reading this, superintendent should be reading this. Um, anyone who is interested in the governing of a, uh, public school should be reading this. Um, the five major themes that he brought out were commitment to good governance, uh, two, shared moral imperative that drives the work of the board, the superintendent, and the strategic direction. Three was highly effective board members and superintendent who have a governance mindset to govern effectively. Four was governing with a unity of purpose. Five was leadership from the middle. Um, and basically the main message of this book is that the focus of governance must be on system improvement. Um, I bought two copies of this, one with my Kindle and the other one has a hard copy. So I can share the hard copy with anyone once it comes in tomorrow.
Is there any workshop with that, like at the convention?
Uh, I cannot read whether or not there is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's a good question.
Yeah. I'd like to be a bridge version. Um, anyone else? Okay. Um, I'm going, we don't have anybody here, but I'm going to go, uh, I don't, do I need to open up to? Yeah, okay. All right. Just checking. Um, I need to open up to, uh, for a public comment. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Show of hands. Let it be noted that there is no one here for public comment. So can I please have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Show of hands. Thank you. Okay. Um, and that leaves us just, um, with needing a motion to, uh, close. Can I still have a, have a motion to close?
So moved. Second.
Show of hands, please. Thank you. Let it be noted at 8:05 PM. Have a good night, everyone.